We're ready to start right on time, 2 o'clock Eastern Time. And this is the Health and Human Services Committee. I'm the chairman. Kateri Walsh is also a member. And also Counselor Govan is a member of the committee. And we'd like to welcome Helen Colton, our Commissioner of Health in Springfield, who does a wonderful job. And she attends all my meetings, which is great. Could everyone just identify themselves that are on the Zoom link, starting with Counselor Walsh?
Counselor Kateri Walsh, at large, member of the committee.
And then we have Claire Overton. Am I pronouncing that right?
She might be muted.
Okay. And I can't see the screen over there. We have some other people that are here, too.
I can't see.
Western Mass News, I just let Counselor Fenton in.
Okay, Counselor Fenton is in, the president of the city council.
So spoken Springfield.
Chairman.
Claire and Western Mass News.
Perfect. The reason why we're having this meeting today, it's twofold. We're going to talk briefly about the bird flu situation that's happening in the country. And bird flu, correct me if I'm wrong, Helen, but it has jumped from the birds to humans. And we've had some fatalities from the bird flu.
Well, mine says person-to-person spread.
Person-to-person?
There are no person-to-person spread at this time. This was on March the 4th that I got this summary. And I have one death in the United States. I pulled this from the CDC.
So where did they contact? Where did they come from, the animals?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, animal-to-human contact, but not human-to-human that we know.
No, that's correct.
Okay. So where are we going with that? With the, I know that it came out of Washington that I think, I think Secretary Kennedy has some concerns about vaccinating.
So are we doing measles first or are we doing bird flu first?
We're going to do bird flu first.
Got it, okay.
So there was some concern by Senator Kennedy, not Senator Kennedy, but Secretary Kennedy, that if they vaccinate the animals, then that could possibly create variants within those animals where it could make it easier for the animals to spread it to the humans. And I just don't know, I'd like to have some clarification on that statement.
Well, I don't think there's any science currently to back up that statement. So I think that's what I would like to know. What is the science that the secretary is using to make that statement? And that I have no idea.
Right. So how concerned should we be about? As a matter of fact, yesterday was the 50th anniversary of the pandemic of COVID. And that is, up to this point, it's killed over 1,300,000 people in the United States alone, which is a tremendous tragedy. And that's an ongoing situation, too, with the COVID. There are still people that are dying from that and people that are getting that. And then we're coming off one of the worst flu seasons in the last six or seven years. And that doesn't seem to be abating yet either. Am I correct? And we've got spring break coming.
There are infectious disease, whether it's bacteria or viruses, certainly are very prevalent at this time of year. So we are seeing increased census in our emergency rooms and in our urgent care facilities. So that is a fact. But as far as bird flu is concerned, what I wanted to try to do is just talk about the impacts on Springfield and sort of just a opening statement about bird flu so that we're level setting.
Great.
Do you mind?
No.
Okay. So bird flu is widespread amongst wild birds and causing outbreaks in poultry and U.S. dairy cows, with several recent human cases in dairy and poultry workers. While the current public health risk remains low, CDC is currently monitoring the situation and working with states to track potential human exposures. The CDC leveraging flu surveillance system to detect any bird flu activity in people. Seventy confirmed human cases and one reported death with H5N1 bird flu in the U.S. so far. The East Coast appears to be less impacted compared to the Midwest and West Coast states. Impacts on Springfield. Backyard poultry is not permitted in the city of Springfield, and there are no poultry farms or facilities within the city. Possible health guidance for our residents. Maintain distance and avoid direct contact with wild birds. Do not use bird feeders to minimize exposure and risks. Avoid close contacts with backyard or domestic poultry. Report any sick or dead domestic birds to the Mass Department of Agriculture Resources. Be alert for signs of illness in birds such as coughing, sneezing, or lethargic. Only consume pasteurized milk and ensure all poultry and eggs are cooked to an internal temperature of 165 Fahrenheit. So that is what we can do as individuals. Person-to-person spread has been none. Current public health risk, they're saying, is low. Cases in the United States is 70, and deaths in the United States is one.
What about animals that you have? Your cats or your dogs that go out and they come in contact with birds that are dead? And they bring those back home or they come back home? Some of these cats are being infected now, are they not? With the bird flu? No?
Not to my knowledge. I just want to be clear. I did some research so that I could pull out these paragraphs for you. And the research did not show me that there were cats and dogs who were impacted by bird flu. Now, that could be the case where the poultry farms are or it could. But in the city, as I did that investigation, I did not find any domestic animals that were impacted.
Now, did I read something about cat food that may be tainted with? Maybe I read it wrong or maybe am I on the wrong track on that one?
Again, I don't know. It could be. You could be absolutely correct, Counselor. So I don't want to say, I would just say that I have not had that as a part of my knowledge base.
Thank you so much, and thanks for that presentation. Any counselors have questions?
Yes, Counselor, my hand is up. I don't know if you can see it on the screen.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you, Helen, for that presentation. I know that's, this Counselor Santinella has brought this up before. And I know it is of concern to a lot of people. But can you clarify what you said about bird seed? Are you saying not to feed birds? Because I think people do that, don't they?
People do that. But one of the recommendations to decrease risk is asking individuals who have bird feeders to really be careful because it is a bird. But yes, people do feed their birds. They have bird feeders in their backyard. And I don't think anyone is asking that that not, for residents not to do that. We're just saying, to minimize your risk, you may want to consider not feeding birds who are on your property.
Okay. Is one section of the country more at risk? I would think it'd be more Midwest where there's more farms.
Yeah, definitely. Because backyard poultry is not permitted in the city of Springfield. So where there are backyard poultry farms, where poultry is prevalent, then those farms and states and our counties are really more at risk than a city like Springfield. The important part about the pasteurized milk, I think it's important to remind our residents. I don't know anywhere in the city where raw milk is consumed. Could be it is, but we're recommending that pasteurized milk be used.
Now, I don't know if they do this, but do farmers' markets have unpasteurized milk? They have to get a permit from you?
Not to my knowledge. I do not believe anywhere in the city. Now, this is, there may be places that sell or individuals who drink past raw milk. I just am not aware of it.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
But it says, "Do not use bird feeders to minimize exposure risk." That is a recommendation that I pulled off. This is my, these are my notes, but I definitely pulled it off of the CDC website.
And to follow up, I mean, if there was a concern, you, because of your position, would get some kind of an alert, wouldn't you?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, the State Department of Public Health will send out an alert. So should there become a case of bird flu in our city? Or should someone become infected or impacted anywhere in the Commonwealth? State DPA is going to put out that alert. So I will definitely have that and be able to communicate with the council.
Well, thank you.
Helen, what are the symptoms?
The symptoms? Let me move over to symptoms. The symptoms, my understanding, is much like flu-like symptoms. The, you know, potential headache, runny nose, you know, just feeling as though you have a flu. So, because it is a flu. So those are the symptoms which are very much like the flu itself.
Now, we're working, are we not going to be working shortly on a vaccine? They're talking about a vaccine for the chickens. But aren't they also talking about a potential vaccine for humans? If this transmits and skips into the general population?
Well, the CDC and NIH is currently doing research. And so is there a vaccine that is available right now? To my knowledge, no. But certainly, the CDC and NIH, National Institute for Health, are doing the research to try and come up with a formula to be able to potentially have a vaccination.
Thank you.
Particularly if it starts to be a person-to-person, then we definitely know we have to really make sure that we're having prevention strategies in place.
Perfect. Mr. President, any questions?
No, I appreciate you bringing it to the forefront, Chairman Santinello and Commissioner Colton Harris, obviously. You know, in the current times, the world is very sensitive to public health in a way that we weren't in pre-COVID. And it's important that we stay on top of these things and stay in front of them. So I appreciate you doing your due diligence on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. If there's no other questions, we'll go right over to measles. And that apparently is spreading across the United States. It started, I believe, in Texas. There's about 245 cases in Texas already, almost equal to the entire last year. This is a, this is a disease that we thought we eradicated in the year 2000. And we haven't had a death from the measles since 2015. And unfortunately, we've had two now. One being a child and the other being an adult. And it seems to be spreading in different areas of the country. I believe New York now has cases.
And Rhode Island.
And Rhode Island and Vermont. And so it's at our doorstep. It's at, you know, we border New York and we're so close to Rhode Island. So Helen, what are the symptoms on that disease? And how concerned should we be with that spreading in Massachusetts?
Well, I obviously believe we should be concerned. There is no, what we're watching across the country is very concerning. But it's also, we also should remember that about 92% of those individuals who are contracting measles are unvaccinated.
Right.
These, so the vaccination really is critical as far as managing measles is concerned. So I wanted to just give you, wanted to give you the immunization rates, which is in yellow. I don't know if you want it. Which is in yellow for all of the schools in the city of Springfield. So as you can see, most of our schools for vaccination rates from kindergarten to, and this data is from the year 2023 to 2024. But as you look at all of our schools, you see that they are in, no one is below, except for this Freeman School. And I talked to them on the phone, and they told me that that 41% is not accurate. It is Frank Freeman School. You see that 41%? And they told me that is not accurate. They have only two children in that school that are, that are, do not have the full vaccination series. I just wanted to point that out because as I looked down and I saw that 41%, it was very concerning to me.
Now, why would, why would some of these schools be at 85%? Why not in the 90s like the rest?
Well, it could be because that child did not receive the second dose. So these numbers represent fully vaccinated, right? So the number of children who are fully vaccinated with MMR, measles, mumps, and rubella.
Right.
And so that is what I, what you're seeing here. One or two students who do not have a full vaccination regimen.
Now, the way I remember it is the vaccination would be given at the age of one, approximately one years old. And then the vaccination would follow a few years later for the second shot, the booster?
The booster, the initial immunization, and let me find that for you because I did write that down.
Okay.
So one or more doses of live virus measles containing vaccine administered on or after the first birthday for pre-age school. Two doses of live measles containing vaccine for school-aged children, adolescents, and adults at high risk are, including college students, healthcare personnel, and international travelers, is done, is done the following year. But what's important is if you were born prior to 1957, the measles rate.
Which I was.
Was so high that all of us were vaccinated, right? And unless you work in healthcare, if you're born before 1957, you are considered to have presumptive immunity to measles even without vaccination. So you're okay because you probably have immunity. But if you were born after 1957 and vaccinated prior to 1968, you may be recommended to get one dose of MMR. Why is that? Between 1957 and 1968, they were using an inactivated measles vaccine. And it was sometimes used. So if you got vaccinated.
Can't be the dead virus.
That's right. If you got, if you got vaccinated between 1957 and 1968, then you may want to consider getting another dose, which I think is very important for the public to know, for those individuals, that it may impact.
So are you saying that people that were vaccinated, that were born after 57 or 1968 in that timeframe?
They were vaccinated.
That they could be susceptible to getting the measles?
What we're saying is you should get another dose. If you were vaccinated between 1957 and 1968, the vaccine that was used was not a live and not as effective. And then we, in 1968, we went back to using the version that is being used today.
Helen, how, when do you think the ends, when do you think this will be over, this threat? It seems to still be spreading throughout, I think there's 12 or 14 states now that have it. How long could this continue?
I think this could continue for a while. Because as you see, the virus is jumping from that initial Texas. You remember it was, it was Texas where we were hearing about.
And then New Mexico.
So, and now we have Rhode Island.
And maybe California and Florida. We don't know yet.
I don't know. But so you ask a question. But I don't have the answer because this is continuing to spread right now. So when will it end? I have no idea.
Now, the definition, Helen, as far as I know and what I read, is an outbreak would be three or more people. Who consider an outbreak in a community would be three or more people.
Yes. That's my understanding.
Yeah. So we don't have any, obviously, we don't, we don't have any cases reported in Massachusetts, do we?
No. We do not. And the state put out the clinical advisory on March 11. So they're keeping us all up to date around what's going on across the country. I would also recommend individuals who are traveling to Texas or traveling to other parts where there may be a measles outbreak to really take into consideration that there is that in the environment. Because that's another way. If I visit my cousin in Texas and I get exposed and I come back to Massachusetts, I could potentially put others at risk. So I think traveling to those states where there is a measles outbreak, it's advisory to, it's advisable to take the caution.
We're joined by Counselor Davila. Hi, Victor. How are you? I think he's on mute.
Yeah, he's muted.
Victor, how are you? Whatever. Kateri, you want to chime in?
Well, I think it's great that you and Helen are bringing all this to our attention. It seems impossible to me that we're worried about the measles again. Is it measles, mumps, hooping cough?
And rubella.
And rubella.
MMR. MMR.
Yeah. So, and is it, I know, obviously, when we were growing up, you had no choice. You got vaccinated. But I think there are a lot of people that are anti-vax, correct?
You know, yes, it is an option. But in Springfield Public Schools, it's my understanding that you have to have at least begun your vaccination regimen. So that while students may not be fully vaccinated, in order to be able to be in the classroom, there should be, the regiment should have been started.
Of course, if you have measles, it's pretty obvious you have measles. Yeah. It's visible. So are teachers on, warned to be on the lookout for certain symptoms?
Well, I definitely think that they are on the lookout for those body rashes or looking at, you know, just the signs that a student could potentially have, have measles. So I'm positive that all the nurses in Springfield Public Schools are taking that precaution.
Does every school have a nurse?
To my knowledge, they do. It may be rotating. So you may have a nurse who covers two schools, for example. There are 26 schools, I think, in our district. I don't know. I believe that the empowerment zone shares our nurses as well, although I'm not sure about that.
Okay. Yeah. It seems there's a lot we have to look out for.
Well, our nurses, this certainly isn't the days of when I was in school, is that, you know, the kinds of things that we're looking at as far as bacteria, viruses, bird flu, COVID, I mean, all of those really risks to our health are not something that we had to think about. But we definitely are taking lots of precautions right now.
Yeah. And with some of these risks we're looking for, are children more vulnerable?
Well, for the measles.
Yeah.
That is, for the, I want to say for the most part, that is a childhood disease. But obviously, adults can contract the measles as well. But primarily, our job is to make sure the students are vaccinated so we can prevent a measles outbreak in Springfield and in Massachusetts. But again, right now, there are no cases in Massachusetts.
Are shingles similar to measles? They're totally different shingles?
I think it's a totally, well, remember, shingles, we're talking about measles impacting younger people. Shingles impacts.
Right.
Older folks. And so I'm not sure if it's the same virus. But the impact, as far as our residents concerned, is a totally different population.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thanks for keeping an eye on it.
How do we get the word out, Helen, about that dead virus from 57 to 68? I mean, your primary care doctor should be telling you that when you go to visit your doctor, if you're in that age group. How do we get that word out? Because that's a potential, that's a potential hole.
Well, I think that I'm going to give this page to our reporter, who, you know, it goes, it talks about zero cases. And it has the adults before 1957 where they're saying that we have immunity. Adults born 57 or later, that's there. And then who should get one dose of MMR to boost them? And that's the adults born in 1957 and through 68 who took that other vaccine. But I'm going to give you this. It kind of lays it out. Would that be helpful to you?
Sure. Are you saying people born between 57 and 68 or vaccinated between 57?
Oh, I'm sorry. Vaccinated between 1957 and 1968.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah. But you bring up a good point. It was in 1968 that we have the live virus that we're using today. But maybe I can gift, just give you, Jeanette, this, it's Jeanette, right?
Yeah.
Maybe I can just give you this one paragraph that you can just put in the article. And it says, "In 1968, the live version has been in use that we use today." And it talks about people vaccinated prior to 68 should be re-vaccinated. So, and it, but it also says not many people fall in that group. It says the inactive measles vaccine was given to fewer than 1 million people. So they're, they're saying that that's, but I'll give you that then. Maybe you could just, so get the word out, Counselor, yes.
What other question? When you gave out the kindergarten immunization data of 2023 and '24, I'm looking down this list of polio vaccinations. And some of these schools are in the 80%, 83 percentile for polio. Even though polio has basically been eradicated, why aren't those numbers at 100%?
Don't know. I think that that's something we can ask the schools. Like I called Freeman to see why they were at 41% and they updated me. But I think the Springfield School nurses can probably do a better job of explaining these rates than I can.
Okay. If you can, if you can get back to us on that?
Happy to.
That would be great. I think this has been, oh, we're joined by Tracy. How you doing, Counselor? Counselor Whitfield?
I'm here, I'm sorry. This is hard for me to tap the button sometimes. Thank you.
How you doing, Tracy?
Good. I'm sorry.
Really informative meeting with the commissioner on bird flu and also the measles.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I missed most of it, so no, I'll just wait until we get the report and I'll take a look at those.
Yeah, from the schools.
From the schools, yes.
The immunization. Victor, can you hear us? Victor?
Yes, I can hear you just fine. The Counselor Santinello, thank you for your presentation. I do have a quick question regarding the flu, the bird flu. Does that affect the egg production at all? If the bird has the bird flu?
Yes, certainly. Because those poultry farms are really the ones where we're seeing the initial outbreaks. And so if there's bird flu in poultry, those eggs are not eggs that are going to be sold in the market, which will drive up the cost. You're seeing the cost of eggs, which is a direct.
Pretty high.
Direct result of the bird flu.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Take your
Helen, don't we use those eggs for vaccination too, for the flu? Don't we, don't we use it for, aren't the eggs important on the manufacture of, of the flu vaccine?
So the egg, so the eggs are important, but I'm not sure what the vaccination has been changed, how they're using the, the eggs, because I know that it has been a challenge, but yeah.
I think this meeting has been extremely informative, but I would like to reconvene within the next two or three weeks, because this is a changing situation. And if it changes dramatically, then we can reconvene, Helen, in three or four weeks, or whenever that happens, so that we can keep the, the public at rest and, and be ever vigilant for these two, for these, and even COVID. COVID is not going away. I mean, we had a meeting on COVID about a month ago, remember, Helen?
Yeah.
Six weeks ago? And people are still dying from COVID. People are still getting COVID. So we have to be ever alert, and that variant could change at any time, with COVID even.
And we are still handing out test kits every Tuesday and Wednesday at the department. So because, as you know, the federal government has stopped giving free test kits. So we are, we are handing them out to our, the public.
And I just want to say, in, in wrapping this up, that if people read stuff on the internet or stuff that could be coming out of the, the National Health, you know, the Health and Human Services that's headed up by Robert Kennedy, that things like cod liver oil might be a cure or a treatment for, for the measles. Talk to a doctor, talk to an expert, because I just, you know, I'm leery of that. I really am. So would you agree with that, Helen?
Well, I think you should talk to your primary care physician, just in general, in terms of the vaccine, the vaccinations you need, and really overall health status as far as health and wellness is concerned. I think we all should do that, because you're right. These are extremely changing times around bacterias, viruses, and the potential outbreaks that we could be facing in the future.
Thank you so much. Does the press have any questions?
Of course.
Thank you so much. Thank everyone for attending. Helen?
Counselor Santinello, oh, no, this is, I just need you to schedule a meeting for my nurses, thanks.
I will. Yeah, I will. You know I will.
I appreciate.
Quickly.
Please.
May I ask a question, Ms. Helen, on that?
Sure.
So we were looking at the nurse's contract at the last city council meeting, and I know it's not on the agenda, so just real quick, do you think nurses are getting paid adequately?
Oh, absolutely not. I would agree with you that the salary for public health nurses is, is low. And so to increase that, we did try to do that through some of the union negotiations. However, I have a huge tuberculosis case in the city of Springfield. And not have that contract passed was really, we can talk about it later, but I was absolutely devastated, because I have part-time nurses who want to do the work and are in that contract, and I could have started hiring at least some part-time nurses. But anyway, I will wait until, I know you all had questions. I'm happy to answer them. But I will wait until Counselor Santinello
Could be the meeting. Yeah, and that'll be very shortly.
Okay. Okay, that's great, because we want her to get her staff in, but we also wanted to see higher wages. So maybe, how long is the contract? Do you know?
I think they're three years, aren't they? I believe they're three-year contracts. But no, listen, Counselor Whitfield, I appreciate you considering the salaries, because I think that's an important discussion. But I'd like to get the contract done, and then, you know, or if, if we have the money in the general fund to be able to increase it now, that's fine with me. So I appreciate that, but I want to make sure we go, we get this done.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Commissioner, just on the same subject, and again, it's not on the agenda, so I'm gonna keep it short. I will be sending you an email, but we can set up a call, because I do have a few questions that I would like answered before we approve this contract in particular. And absolutely, we need to get you the staff that you need to carry out that important mission for the city. I, I am, you say something that just now that caught my eye, that you have a large case of TB cases here in the city, which needs to be addressed, of course. And so, but I do have some questions, and I will talk to you offline on the issue.
Anytime, anytime, Counselor.
I will send you an email in a little while.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. If there's no other business, the meeting is adjourned.